This is a called and convened Greer City Council meeting. The purpose of our gathering tonight is for a workshop in regards to the City of Greer budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024 and 25. With that, I would ask that you join me as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, let us count our many blessings today and be mindful of the least of those blessings to what we consider the most. And as we do that, help us to remember all of those in our community as well, too, and their needs. As we consider things in our budget tonight, we ask that you give us insight and understanding, that you will give us a sense of clarity, that you will give us a sense of purpose, and that as we go through this budget, that you'll guide and direct us as we seek to lead this city. Ask these things in Christ's name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, as we gather tonight, just a little bit in the way of information about where I intend that we go tonight and how we do that. This is an opportunity certainly for you to clarify questions that you may have around the budget, be that numbers or personnel or whatever that may be, that this be a time that you would get information that you need. This is also a time for us as counsel to give directive and direction to those that have worked so hard to put this budget together. One of the things that I think that is important for us to note is the time and effort that has brought us to this point. For us, this is an annual exercise, but it is also an annual exercise by our staff. And I know that out of sight, out of mind, sometimes we don't give due or proper respect to the amount of time and work that goes into creating this budget and this ordinance. I recognize that there are going to be questions tonight and comments tonight about why or when or where something is taking place in this budget. I can assure you that over the last several months, that our administration, that our financial department and our departments have met for tens, if not hundreds, of hours to bring us this document tonight. And it has been perused, it has been scrutinized, it has been debated, it has been prayed over and everything else that you want to add to that in terms of bringing us to this point. So not to minimize debate or questions or comments in any regard tonight, we will address those as necessary and as you have those. But I think there is a tendency sometimes to, and not maybe necessarily among this council, but others, to feel like that this comes to us after a wave of the magic wand and a few mystic words sprinkled over it sometimes. I read just this week, one of our cities in the lower part of the state, in their workshop, their administrator brought them a budget that was $10 million out of budget. They passed on their next meeting, the budget, a balanced budget that left $13 million worth of recreation projects in it. So I am assuming that reading between the lines, there was pretty clear direction during that meeting about what they felt like was important. And so tonight is an opportunity for us to let our folks know what is important, but to also let you know that these are discussions that have taken place on a micro level as well as a macro level. And we'll hear from department heads if necessary, but I think we can move forward tonight with the information that we'll have and that will be given to show the attention and the time and the talent that went into producing this document. So with that, this is the City of Greer ordinance, budget ordinance. This before you is for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. With that, I will turn the floor over to our administrator. Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our department heads and staff that are here tonight. Mayor, you're absolutely right. It was this team and others that have poured over their budgets to bring you the document that you see tonight and that you gave first reading of on Tuesday night. I want to just start by just reminding you all of our budget process, how we do this. And it really begins with the council retreat in February. And y'all help us, you set the direction that we then bring the budget to you that you see tonight. We set up a budget team. You see David and Susan, Mike and Katrina here. And the way we set this up is we ask the departments to submit their budgets. At that time, the team meets with the department heads and goes through line by line by line. What are you looking for? What are you asking for? What is your request here? What is your request there? So as they go through that process, the budget team then makes some recommended adjustments to those budgets that then we then meet and finalize the budget document from an administrative level to then bring to council. So what you see tonight is the final iteration of all of that process. So with that, what I want to do is turn it over to David and let him walk through a brief PowerPoint that provides an overview of this year's budget with some specifics that I know y'all have expressed some interest in. So with that, David, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayorman and Mayor and counsel. We'll first start with, this is the highest level of information that we have in our budgeting system. So you see in that, the first column is Mark approved, and that's just a terminology used in the software system that drives the reporting features in the system. But that is the number that is before you in the recommended budgets that were in the first reading last week. The column on the right-hand side where it says pending approval, you see the total at the bottom of just shy of $35.3 million. Those are requests that were put in through the department heads for budgetary consideration that were not approved and not recommended last week for your first reading. Those two numbers added together and it's a big number, just shy of $109 million. Those were our total requests for fiscal year 25. Out of that 109 million, the 73.4 million is what has been approved to this point through the Budget Committee's process, budgeting process and for your consideration at first reading last week. Just high level, there's a lot of issues that we were looking at and trying to address, but our prime directive in issue this year, we're really more about taking care of our current employees and handling the issues that face them today, legislation coming out of Washington DC that has faced. This is a status quo budget from prior years, does not increase our level of service, nor does it decrease our level of service. It is just keeping our level of service, again, status quo, and addressing certain particular issues with our workforce. Comparing this year's budget to last year in fiscal '24, we had a total budget passed of just over $83 million. And requests this year were just over $73 million. Difference between '25 and fiscal year '24, we have a reduction in budget requests of Looking at the top level of categories of those changes across every budget that we have presented to you and across every category that goes into those budgets, there's the high-level categories that we look at from property taxes, purposes of fees, franchises and licenses, all of now the transfers. Right there in the middle, fund balance appropriation, you see a negative 6.5 million reduction between fiscal '25 and fiscal '24. This is just the high-level categorical increases and decreases across every budget, across every fund that we budget that was reviewed. This is the revenue side. And looking at the expenditure side, again, across every fund that we budget, not just a general fund, but every fund. Personnel increases citywide, 1.8 million. Operating expenditures decrease of 2.2, increase of 2.2 million. Capital expenditures, a reduction of 7.2 million with transfers also being a reduction of just 4 million. Total reduction between, again, '24 to '25, 9.7 million. Now specifically, looking at the general fund, adjusted general fund, budget for 2024 in the general fund is 49,587,000. Budget requests for fiscal year 2025 are 51,689,000. That's a 2.1 million dollar increase in the general fund. Similar to the prior slides, this looks at it from each high-level category. So just in the general fund, we have a property tax increase of just under 4.8 million. The majority of that is related to the 14 mills that we'll be discussing later, estimated about 3.1 million, and remaining 1.6 million is just our growth that we are experiencing through this. Permits and fees, we're continuing to see a, what we consider albeit temporary decline, but a temporary decline in permits and fees for fiscal '25 of about 430,000. Our franchises and licenses are continuing to be strong and grow as our population grows, so we've got a half a million dollar increase there. Looking down to grants, there's a reduction of 551,000 in the general fund. And our grants overall decreased from fiscal '24, not just in the general fund, but all funds. I think it was like, what, $2.6 million? But that makes up of, there's a $1.1 million Awards Creek grant in the fiscal '24 budget, and then a firefighter grant that we applied for last year that we did not receive, that was of 947,000. So those two grants are not in this year's budget. And that makes up a large decrease in our grants for fiscal '25. Total of 1.7 million. Fund balance appropriations, you have a decrease of almost 2 million. That is directly related to our capital projects that we are currently working on. Those projects that are not complete, we will continue to be working on those, but there is not a fund balance appropriation for those large projects carried over from prior year. And the transfers down at the bottom is related to capital projects also. So reduction in fiscal '25 of 904,000. Looking at the expenditure side for the general fund, you see increases of personnel of 1.7 million. A large portion of that, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at issues that are affecting our current personnel. Included in that 1.7 million is the 1.5% increase that council approved this year recently in the last payroll, plus the COLA and performance evaluation increases for fiscal '25, as well as approximately about a million dollar increase in our health benefit fund, make up the large portion of the increase in the personnel expenses. Operating expenditures, got an increase of 1.7 billion. Just a couple of large items that make up a large portion of that increase. Our street lighting has a budgetary increase of almost $100,000. Property insurance that ensures all of our facilities went up $251,000 for fiscal '25. And we're with grants that we received. Our school resource officers, debt expenditure, that line item was the increase in 224,000 property maintenance citywide to allow us to maintain our properties, not our properties, but properties in the city, had an increase of $100,000 to our code enforcement. That makes up a large portion of the operating expenditures. Debt service, the last couple of years, we've had some larger lease purchases, and as those have rolled on, and the debt service to account for those that have rolled on to the budget, we're seeing increase, 1.6 million in fiscal '24 and fiscal '25. As I mentioned earlier, fewer capital projects, and that directly relates to this million-dollar decrease in capital, and miscellaneous transfers of 1.4 million, a total overall increase in the general fund budget of 2.1 million. This moves into the first slide that affects the 14 mills. And this is, I'm going to have to take a few minutes to walk through this slide so that you understand the flow of transactions that is occurring here. Across the top, you see January to December, three times. So this is a core snapshot of three years, looking at three-year cycles. The red line is a representation of a calendar year between January and December. Green line and the associated vertical green bars are the fiscal years that run from July to June. So within each fiscal year, in October is when the counties bill taxes. So that is at the end of the calendar year, but in the first half of our fiscal year. Ending in mid-December and carrying through mid-February, we receive the majority of the taxes coming in from the property tax bills from the two counties. And that is collected for the first month, two months of the calendar year, but the second half of our fiscal year, excuse me. And that carries over from year to year. So if you look at calendar year '23, 24 taxes are billed. Calendar year '24, 24 taxes are collected. In the same calendar year, '25 taxes are billed, and then in calendar year '25, 25 taxes are collected. And that carries forward year to year. But our fiscal year splits each of those calendar years in half, with half of the billing occurring in the first half of our fiscal year and the collections occurring in the second half of our fiscal year. So that is the series of black blocks underneath the green bar that you're seeing in between the vertical lines, which is delineating fiscal year. The next row of blocks underneath that are just important dates. So the first blue block in fiscal year '24, that was when we issued our Series 2024 IPRB debt. So that was issued last month in May. That next blue block is our first debt service payment. But you will notice that occurs before taxes are billed, certainly before taxes for fiscal year '25 are collected. That debt service payment was built into the debt issue and will be paid from funds issued from the debt. That's why it's highlighted in green, to separate it from the next three boxes that are highlighted in yellow. Those next three boxes are debt service payments that will be made by the city directly from the collection of taxes. Those occur after the taxes are collected in mid-December to mid-February, which allows us to make the payment from taxes collected in mid-March. And then cash flow carries this over within that same calendar year, but carries this over to the fiscal year to be able to make the next September payment in fiscal '26, again, before taxes are billed and before they are collected in December, February of the next calendar year. Before we move on, are there any questions you have to clarify the overlapping cycles between calendar year and fiscal year, and how it relates to our debt service payments So this sets us up for what we have in the budget that is before you, last Tuesday for first reading and tonight for discussion. The 14 mills that we are discussing will generate an estimated revenue of 3.3 million. Debt service that was presented to you in the budgets for first reading, that number was given to us before we closed the actual debt issue. And that number was estimated to be $980,000. But then when we issued the debt a couple of weeks ago in May, actual debt service numbers came in for that first debt service payment in March of '25. The actual number is $1,154,000. And that's mostly related to the taxable bond series that were released with the 2025. Subtracting the actual $1,154,000 from the estimated revenue of 3.3 million, leaves net receipts in fiscal '25 of $2,000,000. That's where we are today. So with the overlapping calendar years and fiscal years, funding wisely in the budget, there are one-time expenditures that in the budget, and so the cash flow from tax receipts were applied to those capital projects and other repairs and renovations. Those are broken out here. Identified each specific project greater than $50,000, and then we have multiple other projects under $50,000, a total of $330,000 down at the bottom of the first set. With total repairs and renovations being $2,580,000, which more than encompasses the 2.1 million net revenues from the Have any questions from that?
David, if I'll jump in real quick. Going back to the 14 mil increase, just by way of reminder, the 2024 series of bonds is an A and a B. It has a taxable and a non-taxable element to it. The taxable element is specific to the ability to generate revenue off of the depot street parking garage once constructed. So I wanted to make sure you understood that, was reminded of that, that there were two series or two parts under that 2024 series of bonds. And the 14 mil increase, as you can see in this budget, is the necessary millage required to satisfy the debt on the 24 bonds for the life of the bond, 30 years. One of the things that was brought up, I believe by Mr. Dumas, but certainly echoed, I think by other council members, was other forms of revenue that can be used to satisfy the debt when the time comes. And I want to just remind you of three things that, one, that council could take action on, and that's the issue of impact fees, but the other are accommodations and hospitality taxes that will be generated off of the sports and event center that can be used to satisfy this debt as well. From an anticipated financial impact of the H-tax and A-tax, I will say this, that the pro forma shows that by year five of the sports and event center, they're estimating 105,000 non-local days in this market, so new people in our market by year five, which is 25,000 new room nights in local hotels. And that ends up being approximately $15.6 million in local economic impact this sports and event center will generate by year five. We are conservatively projected a cash flow of this by year two or three, and I say very conservatively, most facilities of this type will cash flow year one, annual revenue nearing $500,000 a year. So just from a projection of what this facility can attract in the ways of additional revenue, especially when it comes to H-tax and A-tax, I think the sky is really the limit. As far as impact fees go, we have averaged 833 new residential units over the last five years, additional units in Greer. The current pipeline includes 4,300 single-family and 630 multifamily units projected over the next seven years. And again, these are, I would say, pretty conservative numbers. We're looking at, for, to be conservative on this, 18,500 new residents and 7,900 new homes in the next 10 years, which is a 36% increase in population of the city. And so what I say that to say this, is when I bring you the impact fee ordinance, which I hope to be sometime early August, we can have that conversation more in depth, but between H-tax, A-tax, impact fees, growth in the mill, et cetera, I think that we are putting ourselves in a position to fund these projects very wisely moving forward. So I wanted to paint that picture for you and at this point now, just open it up to council at your discretion, ask questions of staff.
This is certainly not apples to apples in any regard, but I see Mr. Watson with us back there. I was in Spartanburg recently for a Quality of Life talk that was led by the Spartanburg County Administration. And Cole Alversen, their administrator was there, and there was a question that came up about sports tourism, and he pointed, of course, to the new baseball team and several other things, but I thought it was most interesting that he rattled off pretty quickly that Tiger River. This is the third year that they have been booked solid from March to the end of October, and they are now taking preliminary reservations for 2029, if you want to get in their schedule. I don't know what that generated. I didn't get a chance to ask him, but I feel sure that generates a pretty hefty amount in some regards. And that's, you know, that's within just a couple of miles of where you live, not far. So just offhand.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Albert and I in Reno were able to attend in Spartanburg last week in Spartanburg last week, the presentation with one Spartanburg Reports Authority and their projected growth over the next few years and where South Carolina stands nationally and certainly in the southeast from a growth perspective. And those numbers are very wide-eyed, eye-opening as well. So again, this is, it's never an easy discussion when we talk about a millage increase for any reason, I think, as we've outlined here. This is specific to debt service on four specific projects with the ability to generate revenue off of the projects that will have a significant impact on debt service over the life of those projects. As David mentioned, and as you can see, this is a status quo budget. We have some pressures on this year's budget that are personnel-related. I'll remind you again that the 1.5% was very much appreciated by our staff. And the 4% that you find in the budget this year for cost of living and merit increases are there. So this is a budget. We heard you. You did ask for a conservative budget. This is what we're bringing you. We had 51 personnel requests, and I believe we have four positions funded in this budget, two of which are grant-funded positions. But with that, we'd love to take questions.
Counsel, floor is open for discussion.
We discussed this already, the difference between the projected debt service as presented and the actual debt service number that you mentioned. I think it was the last slide. Can you speak to that?
I'd be glad to, yes. There's two things that are moving on this. One, and what you'll see in that, David, if you'll back up to the do the major capital projects included in the recommended budget. I think that's the slide.
If he's asking about that one?
Yes.
That one?
Yes.
Okay, so the 270,000, the difference between what was presented? That's specific to the taxable that wasn't included in the initial IPRB issuance documents? Initially, it was not, we didn't have a taxable portion, but we decided to put that in there at, towards the end to allow the city the flexibility to lease spaces, generate revenue off of the garage.
Just a tweak in our strategy.
It's a tweak, but it provides us more flexibility on the garage. And that's where you see the $270,000 difference. Excuse me, $170,000 difference. Is that right? Yes.
Because when we issued the debt, we actually were able to secure lower rates than what we were initially projected, correct?
That, David and I talked about it the day it happened. And we were both like, gee, I wish we could have done all of it at once, the 24s and 25s, because we caught just an absolute sweet spot in the market that day. Because in subsequent conversations with our financial advisors, the days after our issuance, which is now a month ago tomorrow, have seen a substantial increase in interest rates. So we actually projected to save $3 million, a little over $3 million over the life of the issuance, because we were able to drive down through effectively auctioning off the bonds because we had so many bidders.
I think it was on that next slide. I did have questions on that. Would you mind going to that slide? I don't remember what it was offhand, but let me digest for a minute.
If I can, if I, let me just, I'll prompt a question. How's that? What you're seeing here are one-time expenses that we have allocated out of the balance of the 14-mill increase. Okay? So if you go back to David's chronological slide, anybody that can do the math will say, well, hang on a minute. We're going to collect 14 mills, but we're only going to have debt service this year. That's somewhere in the neighborhood, you know, 11 mills. What that list of project does is take the balance of the revenue and put it towards one-time projects that can be completed that we won't have to worry about again as we have levied the millage. And we had these initial conversations months and months and months ago with council, both formally and informally. The question became, well, how do we levy mills? How are we going to, what's the philosophy? What do we want to do? And there was some indication that, well, let's just pull the Band-Aid off and do what we need to do. The 14 mills that are in here, is that effective ripping the Band-Aid off? That is what will be required to service the debt for the entirety of the bond without us having to issue GO annually, which would cost us more in the long run. So any savings we would see in that interest rate reduction would be lost with annual issuance costs. So that's why we're recommending the 14 mills in this budget. And that's it moving forward.
Would you mind going back to that last slide?
Andy, in regards to the Sports and Events Center, and I'm just, because I forget. Have we, as part of the scope, are we looking at how traffic will interact with our infrastructure downtown? I know you rattled off a lot of statistics of how there will be a lot of movement. I just don't want us to forget how that will look on our infrastructure in the future as, and start really figuring out what that will look like from a budgetary standpoint, if there's anything that we need to do from a infrastructure standpoint.
Well, to that point, Mr. Booker, I've also heard from this council that while you're very interested in impact fees, an impact fee that you're very interested in would be one tied specifically to transportation, road improvements. There's, what you're going to see when we bring the impact fee study to you and the ordinance to you is four. You're going to see parks, recreation, tourism, police, fire, and public safety. And without getting too far into that, the draft study, the public safety arm of it is tied, interestingly enough, directly to the public safety training facility. But we'll get into that a little more. But to answer your question, an impact fee tied to transportation will require its own study and a capital improvement plan that will then, that fee would fund. In a general sense, thankfully, we've been blessed to have landed on a piece of property that is already serviced by a major thoroughfare, and it is intersected by a major thoroughfare. So while we'll have to do all the normal transportation impact analysis or traffic impact analysis, I do hope that that is something that we are prepared to face moving forward.
And I think also that'll kind of help validate our hunches on how this will all come together. You know, really understanding how traffic will interact with that site in downtown. If the traffic projections are looking good, then you know the infrastructure is working.
Yes, sir.
I think another interesting part of that discussion, Mr. Booker, is going to be the fact that the site lends itself to plenty of development in that area down there as well, too. And so while we may be thinking right now about people that'll be using that all coming to a parking garage or to an area in the downtown, there is more than likely going to be extensive development around that entire area down there, which is pretty ripe for the picking in terms of development that will, I think, almost immediately create A-tax and H-tax in that area as well, down there, too. Short run from there to the airport, short run from there to the interstate, much closer to come to Greer than it is to go to Pelham Road. I think that's, that area is just bound to grow as soon as this center takes place.
Let me make sure I understand about the 14 mills and how we how we either approve it or don't, and then what comes after this first year. So I understand that the 14 mills is for debt service, period, not for general operations or anything else. It is for the debt service, correct?
It will require 14 mills to, yes, sir, satisfy that debt.
Okay. So if by if somebody walked in and said, hey, I've just got all this money and I don't know what to do with it. So here, y'all just, and it's worth 14 mills right now. Does the function of issuing the bonds require us to say or to implement this 14-mill tax? Because that is a guaranteed way of paying for that.
To answer your question, if I think I'm hearing it right, is when Mr. Airwood wins the South Carolina Education Lottery for $1 million?
Yeah.
And you come in and say, I want to give you $42.5 million to service the debt in its entirety on the first two projects, the 24s and 25s. We would take that, put it in the bank, and then council, I would imagine at that point, would subsequently reduce millage by 14 mills? If that's the question? If that $42 million fell out of the sky tomorrow, we absolutely could do that because we now have cash in hand to service that debt. And we would invest it wisely and do what we needed to do, but, yes, sir.
So the 14 mills, it's not a, it's not a box that has to be checked by the investment?
Okay. The bond itself says it's the full faith and credit of the city of Greer. Full stop. Doesn't say, now, of course, the assumption is it's the city's taxing authority.
Sure.
Which is why we did the bond, why we did the projects the way we did. If you'll recall, we've got in this particular one, in the 2024s, we got the garage, we got the public safety training facility. The idea behind that is the public safety training facility is a necessity, a public need. We're not going to walk away from public safety. We could, in theory, walk away from parking garage. You know, just walk away from it. Same thing with the second series. We're not going to walk away from a fire station, but we could, in theory, walk away from recreation. So that's why we tied them together. We mortgaged them together.
Okay, okay. So as we move forward now and next year, next budget year, and our revenues increase, we have the ability, we have the ability now and in the future to say, no, we're not going to do 14 mills. We're rolling that back to whatever. And, but the caveat on that is, well, if we roll it back now, we still have to pay those dollars back. And so it would have to come from other cuts. Correct? No, no, I mean, just talking the way things work.
If y'all looked at me and said, hey, Andy, we don't want to do $14 million or 14 mills, then we would go back. David would be breathing into a paper sack for a while. And we would drastically do what we needed to do to service the debt. Because the fact of the matter is, is we have $42.5 million in the bank. It's got to be serviced.
Right.
GO bonds, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and I got, okay, all right. I guess, Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I've got a, got a few things I want to say that I've heard from just people talking and stuff like that. And, you know, we had a meeting the other day. And in my words, I feel like that we haven't, we're making good decisions. We have good projects ahead of us. We have good people that work for us. We have all of these good issues. We have good problems. Most people, most municipalities would love to be where we are. And it's, that is a, we, it's not, it didn't happen just by chance. We have some things that others don't have, but we have built on all of that. And so I think it's important that this council and all of our staff, and this is incumbent on me as well. When we feel like you don't have direction, when we hear the administrator or department heads or just other staff say, we have to sit there and listen to you guys and try to figure out what you want. Well, one, if that's the message that we are sending, then council, it's, we have to be clear. But we can go back and we can look at our vision statement, our mission statement, our, you know, all of our strategic initiatives. And that's all in black and white. Got them right here. And it's, it gives the foundation of how we need to operate. And when, so we as council have to be clear when we give our directive. This is what's going to go on. And then we have to be confident, and we are, that we've handed that ball off to everybody. All right, here, this is what we said. You guys are the experts. Refine it, but use these mission and vision statements, economic development, all of this to refine it and lay out that plan. Because that's, that's what you get paid for. And I think as we move forward, and we've always done this, I just want to reiterate it that when we are making those decisions, spending the public's money, that as we make those decisions, we've got to know it's the right thing for Greer. Now, maybe it was applied to all these other cities. Fine, but does it work for us? Is it who Greer is? Is it where we want to go, where we want to be? And the example, if anybody's heard me or seen me speak and talk and debate about our UDO, that was a very, it just made my blood pressure rise a lot. And even now, even though we've passed it, I still, I get excited, and not in a good way. Because a lot of it was what I like to call cut and paste. It was the first decision made about, on item A. Was, well, this is what the best practices are based on what city A, B, C, and D were doing. That's not, that's not how we serve. And I think as we go forward, and you guys know all this. I'll just, I guess I'm just saying it for myself. We need to understand who Greer is. There are communities, there are municipalities that surround us that are having great success, but are we made up like city D? And I don't think that we are. I think we're unique. We, we're very much, you can make the point that we are a blue collar, a working man's town almost. And so we need to operate that way. And we need to look at now, we need to look at where we've come from. Look at now and where we're going, and not just the next 12 months. But on out, when most of us in this entire room will not be here. But we have to, you know, we're always laying the groundwork. We're always building on that foundation, and we move and move and move forward. Somebody's got to pick up for us when, where we leave off. And so we need to leave it, you know, as in Boy Scouts, leave it better than what we found. And we've done that, and we continue to do that. I understand that, you know, we're trying to deal in this budget with labor cost. The most expensive The most expensive and the most valuable asset that, that we budget for are you guys. And, uh, I believe, and I always have, that we should, um, be the place of choice to go to work. Not, because it's a great place, great people, uh, but, you know, you've got to be compensated. And I think we've always had a really good compensation package that has to be tweaked on occasion. And compensation, part of that is your salary because, and Mr. Mayorman, you know, he makes the point, well, you can't eat your benefits. That's right. You got to have, when you go to the grocery store, you got to have those dollars to buy the much more expensive groceries than we've been paying for, you know, four years ago. We are trying to address that, and we will, but know that when you work for the city of Greer or any other city, it's just kind of the thing that happens in local government. We get behind, we, as far as pay, but then we catch up. And you got to look at the bigger picture of, you know, if, if you, if you start your career here and you finish your career here, when you finish your career, you're doing well. Uh, it's just, um, there, there's no place to go to work that's perfect. Um, but I think that, that we will bring the salaries where they need to be. And my opinion is that we, we don't just go average. We need to be a step above. Now, how much a step, I don't know, that, that's what we'll, we'll have to decide as we work through this in, in the upcoming years. But if we are, if we provide a compensation package for everyone that is top shelf, step above, then that's what we expect out of everybody, cut above. And, and, you know, we, we've got it. As we budget, and I know there's already been cuts, major cuts that were made before it got to us. Those cuts may have been something that, that may be painful for a department or may not. We, but we've got to make sure that when we ask for something, when we are asking to do a, a, a particular thing, whether it's any department, we need to look at it 360 degrees. You know, one, why, why are we asking for more dollars? Or why are we asking for more personnel? And i- is there another way to generate revenue to help support that? Do we actually need it? And, and, and not, I'm not picking on any department except the fire department now. The, but PD and fire department, they're, they're kind of easy to pull statistics, so you can kind of jab them in the side on occasion. But, and, and I know they, they want more personnel. Great. We, uh, but as we, we look at it, well, do we need that personnel? Chief Hamby said crime's down nationwide. And I said, chief, you're just shooting yourself in the foot when you're asking for more people. So when you say that, uh, fire department, they're asking for more people to come off that truck when, you know, when there's a, a fire call, then, but then you look back, you know, fires are really down since the eighties. I mean, way down. So you, we, we just have to look at, we have to be Greer, look at things seven ways from Sunday and try to make the right decisions. Yep, we're going to make mistakes. And then I will say this, that, um, in our mission statement, and I know the big, the big chunk in this 14 mills is this recreation complex. But one of the things that we say in our mission statement is we're going to promote artistic, athletic, academic, and social values through actions and words. So in one box, we can check that if that's what we approve, if that's how we move forward. I'm sure I'm going to have questions, but I just needed to say that.
Other?
They're coming back to this slide that we're on right now, the 2.6 million dollars. We're using that for these one-time projects in this fiscal year. This amount is what we anticipate being able to cover our next issue next year, correct? For, for the rest.
Debt service payment?
Yes. Try it. Remind me how the debt service rolling off for this facility, how that interacts with the whole plan again?
Um, paid off the first piece of this facility in 2024, and then the second piece rolled off in '26.
And did our projections, did it figure in rolling that back onto our debt service in how we came up with the 14 mills originally, assuming that we would roll that amount?
14 mills covers the debt service today. Uh, with that debt rolling off in the next issue coming in 2025, all of that starts interacting in the next fiscal year or two. They are taken into account in the long term, looking at the entire series over the, uh, over the life of the entire debt. So yes, sir, they were taken into account over the entire life.
Say that again, Dave, please. So.
There's the, the debt that's rolling off the books is rolled into the new.
It will be rolling more into the next issue rather than this one.
Sure, but have we penciled it in?
In the long-range performance, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If you'll recall, when you saw the charts with the gold bars and the, you know, there was a little gray bar, it was at the bottom that showed when that debt was going to be retired, and that that little gray bar was folded then into, uh, the, the gold bar debt that you said that was demonstrated for the life of the one, or life of the bond. One of my questions that I asked at the la, at our council meeting was, please provide me with the, the, the dollar amount in, in the, uh, 2% hospitality and the, um, stormwater fund that was, uh, in the balance, but it was unencumbered. Do we have that tonight?
We didn't prepare.
You just want the dollar amount, correct? This unencumbered, yes.
Unencumbered for this fiscal year.
What's unencumbered, I mean, if, let's just say, we didn't start any more projects starting today, and what's, you know, how much, how much is sitting in there? I think the, the, the fund balance in stormwater is? 3 million?
Yeah, 2, 2.53.
Okay, and?
And it's not promised.
It's not promised, but, you know, you, you look at the, the Maple Creek watershed study that we just had, identified what, like 14 million dollars probably worth of projects? Am I right?
It served the 14, 16 million.
Okay.
Well, let me hear.
So, all right, let, let's, let's just talk about that. That's what we've heard for a long time. We've got all these stormwater projects coming up. I mean, and, and I'm not talking about a couple of months. We've heard this for a very long time. And I think I was very clear at the last meeting. We don't, we don't go in there and rob that fund down to zero of unencumbered dollars, but I think we do go back and say, we need to, we need to put some of that to, uh, to work on what would be considered stormwater, um, uses on these projects. I think that's imperative. I mean, what we're, we're receiving a big rain right now, is these, these things that have been a, that were identified on that, that study, is it anybody's house flooding? The street's flooding? I mean, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I know we got to keep enough to make emergency repairs, that kind of thing. But I think we, as far as the budget goes, that's how I'm looking at it. And I would suggest all of us to, to look for those sources of revenue. Just to say the money is there and we've got these plans for it, well, do, do, you know, I, I haven't seen any action on projects. So I would say, hey, let's, let's get some of that, put it towards these, these, these construction projects. Same thing with, with, uh, 2% hospitality. You know, we, we follow that real close, and we're, seem to always exceed on the revenue of the, the budget revenue, the budgeted revenue side, so why aren't we using some of that? Well, I, it becomes effectively a philosophical discussion that council is going to have to answer. I would say that, when you, specifically stormwater, you know, utilizing fund balance to pay for, uh, stormwater work on these projects in particular, you know, may or may not be eligible. I would say that the stormwater fund is a system-wide improvement, not specific to project improvements, whether. And I would disagree wholeheartedly with that based on our actions in the past on projects we have done. Because at, at least we've never been challenged on it, and I don't want us to be challenged, but, uh, I know that we've used, uh, the 2% hospitality for the park, we use stormwater here. I mean, I, as far as. Well, yeah, we use stormwater here, but it, it actually was, it affected a change in our drainage for downtown. I mean, so there was, I, again, I don't want to get to the point where we're challenging. No, well, it's not, but when you talk about a system, it's, it's, the entire system, everything eventually flows to the ocean. And, and so, yeah, how are you going to define our system? But, but I, I don't want to argue about that, that's, that's, but, but I think that's where we ought to look at some of the money, you know, for engineering or actually putting in infrastructure. But, but I think that's one of the, one of the places we need to go to look.
Mr. Seifert, what's our reserve fund balance right now, approximately?
In stormwater, it's about 2.4 million.
No, just in, in general, the.
Oh, um, citywide?
General fund.
Yeah, general fund. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for that number as relative to the percentage that we've.
But the, the, the general fund, fund balance is 21 and a half million.
Which she budgets pretty.
But, you know, it's under our financial policies, you know, 35%.
35%.
Our operating budget is maintained in fund balance, which leaves us 7 million.
So we have 7 million over and above that 35%?
Yeah. My, my point being, to your point and to Mr. Mayorman's point, that is a number that, that we regulate relative to our policy.
Yes.
And, and to an actuality. Whether or not it, it, it's governed in some regard by, you know, what it is, that is a, that is a decision that council can make at any point in time. If this council as a whole decides to spend that 7 million down to the 35% or projects that we've identified in one way or the other that we feel like we're not going to go to jail for doing, um, you know, then, then that's our prerogative.
Yeah.
But I think this council in the past has felt like, you know, that, that we need to be at least observant of that number, and, you know, we've, we've tried to maintain that balance or more. Um, I think, you know, there, there's, there's, there's some magic scale in there because we've been advised by our, you know, accountants and, and those that, that have seen that number, that, you know, if, if, if our percentage is going to be this, then why do you have this much in there? Uh, on the other hand, I don't think you just want to have 49 cents in there above, you know, just because you got it. So, um, that's, that's probably a, a decision for another time, but I think, you know, if anything comes of that, um, it's prudent to think that we have always kept that, that as a reserve for those times when we might find ourselves in need of either a special project or extra money.
And, and, and I, I agree with what you're saying. You, you don't want, we don't want to go to our savings account and click, clean it out. My point is that, that we need to look at everything to make sure, and, and it, it's not going to happen this go around, I don't think, but maybe next budget year, we start to pull, if it's only a mill or two, back. Because the, you know, and I've already had people, and this is what governments do, we, we put the millage on there and say we're going to roll it back, and lo and behold, it's still on there. And don't want that to happen. And, and, um, I don't want us to have needed, needed widgets for the whole city to go unpurchased because we cut this budget, the bare bones, but then we left these dollars in these reserves that are unencumbered. And, and it, it, it wouldn't make a real big difference if we pulled money here and there, paid for those widgets.
Is that a decision?
Yeah, no, you're, you're right, I'm just.
I'm a mayor, um, our current access over the 35% is about 2 and a half million.
2 and a half million. So we're not going to buy a lot of widgets regardless.
No. But that's 10 mills, right? And I'm not saying that, never, never thought about going to that.
Yeah.
You're saying that's, that's what that, the value is.
Yeah.
I just have two specific items that, um, I, I think council, I couldn't find them in the budget where they're attributed, but, uh, it's something that's supposedly covered in there. That's the, uh, Bridge Public Strategy and the Spartanburg Sponsor Guide. I think, I think that we need, everyone needs to be aware of what that is and how much it's going to cost us.
Sure. Um, just in your alley, I'm going to let Reno jump up there and, and give a little more detail on that, but, uh, both of those are, um, we are, as, as a organization continuing to grow, we are looking at how we interact, not only with, um, uh, our, our partners in Greenwood, Spartanburg County, but how we interact and are a player at the state and federal level. Uh, so with that, um, comes some expenses to ensure that we are, our voices are being heard, um, at that level, and, and both of these are specific to lobbying efforts that we believe that we need to undertake to have a better relationship, both with our counties, uh, local, um, economic development entities, and of course, our, our folks at, uh, at the state level. Reno, do you want to add some color to that, if you don't mind?
Uh, here.
Yeah.
Please. Just to let y'all know, when this came to the board at, at, oh, I get, what is that, partnership or whatever?
Greer Moves.
Greer Moves, I'm sorry, I can't get used to that. Uh, I voted against it until you guys could hear about it. I didn't think it was proper for me to say, yes, we'll pay for that.
So, uh, the Greer Moves organization is the former Partnership for Tomorrow. Uh, as the grid development corporation transitioned to a no longer existing organization, uh, that board helped, uh, the Partnership for Tomorrow sort of think about what the next step in life would be, uh, to support the Greer community. And they came up with two, uh, functional areas that, uh, they thought that could be helpful with. And again, Greer Moves, formerly Partnership for Tomorrow. And again, Greer Moves, formerly Partnership for Tomorrow, is a 501(c)(4) not-for-profit organization. The two, the two program areas are advocacy, sort of outreach on behalf of the city of Greer, and supportive entrepreneurship. And so the request in this budget is for specific support for that program through the Greer Moves organization. Does the city of Greer will make a contribution to Greer Moves? And Greer Moves, as a 501(c)(4) with an Engage Bridge Public Relations, which is a, a group that would help this community specifically through Greer Moves, build relationships outside of the Greer community, specifically with elected officials on the county and state and federal levels, hopefully leading to all opportunities to request assistance for projects that we have coming up. Secondly, there's a request there to support through Greer Moves, One Spartanburg. Very similarly, we don't have a relationship currently with the folks on the One Spartanburg side, and this funding would help to provide some sponsorship money, some membership money to improve those relationships across the, the line.
One Spartanburg, isn't that, is that the?
That's everybody over there.
It's the combined chamber economic development and tourism organization.
Basically, the, the chamber, and then they've got all the other chambers of the smaller cities to buy into it, where they're just trying to focus on city Spartanburg.
I think they-
Is that right?
I think the One Spartanburg group is the Spartanburg County Chamber.
Yeah.
They do have some, I think, some satellite efforts to do some things in some unrepresented communities, not Greer, Greer has its own chamber, of course.
Right. And so they are, th- this is the way I understand it, is that they, yeah, it, it, it is the, or was the Spartanburg County Chamber. And but their focus is mainly on Spartan, downtown Spartanburg, right?
I, I don't know that I could fairly represent what their main focus is. I know the reason for this request is to help to build relationships with Spartanburg County and those businesses and officials there that today we, as the city of Greer, don't have relationships with.
They also do most of the economic, carry the, the water on the economic development efforts for the county as well. And our, our growth is going to continue to be on the Spartanburg County side of Greer. And that's made evident by where you just look at a map and you know where we're growing. And so I think it only, it, it's wise to engage those and, and folks in One Spartanburg to better the relationship for that purpose. Because like it or not, we are inextricably linked to Spartanburg County.
Sure, but I'm not so sure that the way we develop relationships is just give them money. I, because I think, well, with the old Greer development, one of the charges was, hey, we needed to diversify our economy. Because my opinion is that we're overloaded with automotive and warehousing. And you, you're starting to see a lot of signs of that. And I'm, I haven't heard One Spartanburg say anything about diversifying the economy. They just say the same thing won't happen here, again, like it did with textiles, but I can tell you, it will. I do think that we need to build relationships, and I think it's past February when we were in Columbia and we had our dinner with the Greenville County Cities and some of our legislatures, Tom Corbin got up to speak and he said, folks are all on the same team. That right there, we should jump on. We don't have to spend thousands of dollars, but we can spend however much, even if we have to hire somebody to come in, put together a function where those people come from the state, the counties, and let's have a discussion about what we're doing. I, I, I think we spend our money the best. Not sure that, that giving money to One Spartanburg or giving money to the airport to put city of Greer's name on a wall down there builds relationships. I just don't. And that's based on my observation of past history and recent past history.
The, the request for funding is a combination of membership and sponsorships that would put us in the room and at the podium with microphone time to discuss things that are going on in the city of Greer and to build those relationships that I feel are very important for us to do exactly the things that you're representing.
So when we're at the podium, who's out there that we're speaking to? I mean, is there, is there potential businesses? I mean, big industry leaders or?
Yes, sir, there is.
From One Spartanburg?
From the Spartanburg County community.
Yeah, I, I, I-
Yeah, 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 okay.
I, I think, I think we, I think we're underselling the, the, the organization over there, and I'll be glad to, to, to help anybody on this body that would better understand that. To say that, that One Spartanburg is simply a, an arm of the Chamber of Commerce, or to say that their purpose is just to bring all the smaller communities together under, you know, some sort of tent or umbrella, would, would not even begin to scratch the surface of what they're doing over there right now. They, they lead the economic efforts for, for Spartanburg County. They're all housed under that group. They lead several strategic initiatives as well that cover the, the county, including strategically, strategic initiatives in regards to health and to education, entrepreneurship, and small business. And it's open to anybody in Spartanburg County. And it is an organization that is, that is multifaceted. I, I, I think part of what we, what we miss as well too, by saying, you know, well, we just ought to invite people to come over and hear what we need. That, that's good. And, and we certainly want to make them aware of what we're doing and what we're trying to do. But this is a, for lack of a better word, a, a game that you have to play on a, on a continuous basis.
And, and I'm not, I don't want to have it oversimplified. When, if, let's, for instance, if we bring, if we invite these people, decision-makers from the state level on down, when, when we need to have things in common with all of them that we can work on together. To me, that's how you build relationships. The things that you, you said this One Spartanburg is doing is the things that we do. And I, 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 I think we do, we do well, we, with, with how we do things, and-
I, I, I wouldn't disagree, but if, 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 if we can put it in a higher gear and, 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 and capitalize off of the ability to spin the wheel a little faster by using other organizations, why wouldn't we? I mean, here, here's a good, here's a good example, and this is, this is something that, you know, and Riley's brought it up, and we, we need to talk about. Mr. Bettis has brought it up, and we need, we need to talk about. You know, I think we were probably one of the few, if only, city in the county that didn't get appropriations from, from our state legislature this past year. I mean, you look at, you look at Fountain Inn, you look at Simpsonville, you look at Malden, look at Powderville, you look at some of these other places that are getting fire stations, that are getting police substations, that are getting all these other things, millions and millions of dollars. How many of those dollars came to Greer?
I know it, zero.
Zero.
That's right. And, and that's-
And if you're not standing there in front of these folks when it comes budget time-
But, 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 but those are all, those examples, and I, I know what you're saying, are from the Greenville side. One Spartanburg is not going to lobby folks that's representing Greenville or the Greenville area. That's why I think that, that we, I, I understand that there, there is already a group there and they're, they're asking for the same things that we need. Then yeah, we need to look at doing some kind of investment. But right now, I don't know what One Spartanburg does.
Well, as it happens, you'll know Tuesday night in greater detail, because Alan Smith is scheduled to appear before council on his annual, they do it annually, right, their, their annual update. So at least there'll be an opportunity to-
Listen, Alan's the one who said, oh, that'll never happen here. As far as the, the history repeating itself, stood right there and said it, oh, that won't happen. I, I, I mean, I, I, he is a great promoter for Spartanburg. I'm just not sure that we align with everything that they-
Reno, are you going to be part of that One Spartanburg? Were you a representative on that team?
Well, the, the different, the membership, the various sponsorship levels will give a number of our team members, members of council, members of, of staff, the opportunity to participate in, in various events, and again, to speak and to be present and seen at different opportunities that the, that organization hosts. Yes, ma'am.
Reno, how many-
Going to Columbia and lobby?
Ma'am.
You're going to Columbia to lobby?
We are going to, the, the goal is to have the Greer Moves group engage a, a public relations, public strategy group to help us understand the issues, to help us understand the players. I believe in the future, there'll be opportunities to make specific requests to support programs and projects here in the city of Greer. Just as the mayor alluded to, I pulled up a, a, a news article from just last year. It reads, here's how Malden will use 1.5 million in South Carolina funding for city improvements. Of course, that includes money for a fire station, et cetera. That was in July of 2023. Shortly on the heels of that, city of Spartanburg announced $54 million for their baseball stadium, also state appropriated dollars. And of course, as, as you've rightly indicated, the number of dollars that have come into the city of Greer for projects very similar, fire station, sports, athletic facility, are to this point, zero.
And I have, I have a hard time laying that at our feet, that, that we're not getting m- money from the state. I, I think it's, and it's always been this, no, it hasn't always been this way. For a very long time, we have been lacking in representation. Not that, not that we don't have people knocking on doors and making telephone calls. We, we've never been represented well in recent history. And I don't think it's for lack of us not trying to reach out and, and, and get folks to listen to us. I mean, as, as, as a, as an example, the city invested, I don't know how much money, it was on a federal grant, to beautify Weyton Boulevard and plant a bunch of crepe myrtle trees. And some business owners, after they started to mature out, they didn't like them, so they didn't call us, they called state representatives. And they, and state representatives made decisions without even calling us, probably violated some kind of contract we have with the federal government. So I, I don't know that, and then had them removed. I don't, I don't think that, I don't know. I, I, it, that's a real hard sell to me. When I see the talent that we have, that we have in this room, with you, your group, the success you've had in the past, and then I compare what the success, hey, look, I got it, One Spartanburg, they, 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 they got a lot of, of things they can say they have done, but that, the last time they were here, they were saying, you know, one of the things we missed was small businesses. We didn't think about the small businessman. I mean, they, they, they said that. It was all these multi, multi-million dollar projects where, in my opinion, they sold the farm to get them.
Reno, what is the cost ultimately to the city of the Spartanburg offer?
The request is a package of funding to the Greer Moves group, 10,000 of which Greer Moves will spend in various One Spartanburg membership and sponsorship opportunities, 60,000 of which they'll spend on a contract with Bridge Public Strategy Group.
So the two are tied?
Pardon?
The, the two are tied together?
No, sir.
No?
The, the budget request is a package of dollars to donate to, to Greer Moves, the 501(c)(4). The Greer Moves group will then appropriate dollars in different categories, one of which is activities with One Spartanburg-
I got you.
-one of which is with Bridge Public Strategy.
So this is, Greer Moves is 10,000, I mean, Spartanburg and One is 10,000?
Correct.
How often?
Well, it's, it's a package of membership and then various sponsorships throughout the course of the year.
So that gets us a year?
Correct.
Let's probably see if it's good or not, within a year. And the bridges is 60,000 over a year? That's-
That's a $5,000 a month contract.
Yeah, and then it says in the contract, it'd be more. It's kind of open-ended.
Yes, sir.
Reno, I hope one of the goals of this kind of cooperative effort, because we do straddle the two counties, and so I think it's, you know, you can say that's a challenge, but it's also a great opportunity for us to leverage both relationships. And I think, you know, you and I have talked about this repeatedly. I think one thing that's missing in Greer is that, you know, we, we've made this great investment in this entrepreneurial community, and we've got so many of these people coming in, and they've, they come in, but they're going out. You know, they're not staying. And I, and I, you know, I've talked to you about that trip we took to Chattanooga and the incubator that they have there, and I know that Spartanburg County has a Spark Center. I'd love to see us try to advocate for some type of effort to get some state dollars, county dollars, whatever that looks like, to, to build some type of incubator or something like that here, so that all of these people that keep coming through these boot camps that are super successful, that they can start to plant roots here in Greer and then ultimately, you know, land here and grow here. I, I just think that piece is missing right now.
I absolutely agree. That's certainly a big ticket item for which state support will be necessary to make it happen.
Okay, thank you, Reno. Mr. Neat, we appreciate it. Counsel? Give Greer Budget Ordinance Physical Year.
That's certainly a drop in the bucket. I just, I, I wanted counsel to get a full hearing on what that was. I didn't, like I said, I didn't think that was something that I could just approve on my own, so. And even if we said no to it, that's not gonna-
Okay.
That's not going to change the budget radically.
I had one question. Now, there were, we, there were, department heads asked for 51 positions. That puts us, I think, 50, 47 short of what they requested. What would that cost if those positions were fully funded?
Ouch. You sure you want to know that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, I would, I would go as far as, if I'm going to put a round number on it, it's going to be every bit of an additional 12? Would it be that much, David?
With, because it's not just positions as programs and positions to fund the programs also, so.
Mike?
Oh, okay, I see what you mean. So in other words, it's not just-
It's not just, it's not just bodies. It's raising the bar, you know, level of service, putting a new program in place. And then, and so you have the programmatic operational costs as well as the personnel running it. Some of it is just personnel, others of it are programs with personnel.
You know, the, the other thing that we need to remember, and there's no, no indictment on, on the departments themselves, but the fact that, you know, of that request for, for 51 or whatever the number, you know, actually was, we have to remember that probably close to that number is unfilled positions currently.
That's on top of that.
Yeah. That's what I mean. It's, yeah.
35, 32?
32.
As of today, 32.
Unfulfilled positions right now, so, you know.
And you touched on that, Mr. Airwood, at the last meeting.
Well, I, and, and too, we, when it comes to that, we've, we've got to, we've got to just create a, a whole different way that, that we recruit and we retain and, and get people here, build the Greer team. And we, we just, we got to do things differently. And what will happen is the, the, the economics of it will change, and then we'll have to change again. I mean, it's, i- if we continue to do the same things we've always done, we're still gonna, we're still going to be facing the same situations.
That's called insanity, correct?
I believe it is.
We may be, I don't know.
Okay. City of Greer Budget Ordinance Physical Year 2024, 2025. Any additional questions, comments, observations, discussion at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that, as everyone knows, I am not a fan of raising taxes 14 mills in one shot. I've scrutinized this budget as best I can. It's pretty convoluted and busy, and it's, it's really hard to match apples and apples sometimes when you're looking at it.
when you're looking at it. But, and I've said, I do support the projects, I don't support the way we're going about doing it. But I have, I have a little better level of confidence that we will be able to do it, but it's kind of one of those show me the money things, you know? That's the only way I'm going to be really comfortable with it, is when I'm certain that we're going to be able to pay for this thing. And I'm kind of halfway there. I just, in my way of thinking, you would have to go through and do some whittling on the non-personnel part of the budget as best you could to bring it in with less millage. And I doubt these people that put it together are willing to, at this point, micromanage it that much. So that's where I stand on it right now. We're going to vote on this Tuesday.
Vote on it, second reading's Tuesday. Yes, sir.
And that's a public hearing, right?
Yes, sir. Others?
I will say on the lobbying efforts, if we could, since Greer is such an innovative town, push our lobbyists to figure out how do we get reoccurring dollars and not just one-time dollars out of the state appropriations.
We have no business in executive session. Stand adjourned.